I'm glad everybody had the opportunity to come out tonight. Continuing the practice the mayor started when he took office a little over a year ago. The mayor again will brief the district, ward by ward, as well as the many stakeholders, stakeholder groups on his proposed budget for the upcoming year. Before we bring the mayor up, a couple of quick acknowledgements and some instructions for the evening. As far as the acknowledgements are concerned, I'd like to first recognize Sheila Bun, who's the deputy chief of staff, as well as Steve Glade.[37.54][37.54](APPLAUSE). He's the director of the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Engagement. They did a tremendous job of coordinating the overall town hall budget meetings, so I'd like to recognize them for that. Also, I'd like to thank Letitia Atkins, who is the deputy director of the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Engagement. She did a fantastic job of coordinating the logistics for not only this budget meeting, but also the budget meetings that are going to happen throughout the weeks to come.[71.11][71.11](APPLAUSE). I'd like to recognize our Department of Parks and Recreation for not only their setup for tonight, but also for the setup that they're going to have for the weeks to come.[84.86][84.86](APPLAUSE). I'd like to send a special thanks to the mayor's budget team, the mayor's Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy for another tireless season of structuring a budget for the mayor's consideration. As well as, I'd like to recognize the many members of the mayor's cabinet who are present in the event that something agency-specific occurs tonight. I'd like to definitely send a special thank you to the leadership here at Luke Seymour, specifically Principal Spate.[126.61][126.61](APPLAUSE). I'd like to definitely thank the administrators here for allowing us to facilitate this event for tonight. Lastly, I'd like to make note of the several district agencies who are set up with the information at the tables outside. That would be Serv DC, the Office of Aging, the Office of Healthcare, Bill and Rights, and DC Fire and EMS.[161.19][161.19](APPLAUSE). Now, as far as the instructions are concerned, after the mayor gives his presentation, there would be an opportunity for questions. There would be microphones for questions on each side of the room. We ask that you limit the time that you have for a brief remark and make sure that the remark draws a specific question from the mayor. We also ask that you do not pursue follow-up questions until others have had the opportunity to first address their questions. I believe that if we stick to these guidelines, we should be able to get to everyone who wishes to raise issues and ask questions. As always, when I get the opportunity to, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to introduce the mayor. As he presents tonight, I believe that you will have an opportunity to see a budget which is thoughtful, progressive, and compassionate. I believe you will see a budget which not only invests in, but actually seizes the opportunities of the future for the district. So please, join me in welcoming our mayor, Vincent Gray.[245.81][245.81](APPLAUSE).
Good job, man.[251.12][251.12](LAUGHTER). Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you very much. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I was just saying to Markeme, he did a pretty good job, didn't he? Wasn't he pretty good? All right, we are going to present the fiscal year 14 budget tonight. But before we begin that process, I want to give a couple of people an opportunity to give you some introductory comments. First of all, we've been joined by our council member who is with us. Where is he?
Right in front of me.
Oh, excuse me. You know, I really enjoyed working with Councilmember McDuffie. He is, I guess, coming up on a year before too long, and we worked together even before that. And really, he has brought a lot of value, in my opinion, to the council of the District of Columbia, and I want to publicly thank him and ask you all to please welcome him as he makes some comments. This is our first town hall meeting tonight, too, council member.[334.53][334.53](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Ward Five.
Good evening.
All right, y'all are nice and lively tonight, right?
Yeah, nice.
I know you don't want to hear much from me tonight because you all come here to listen to our mayor, Vincent C. Gray, talk about his budget, and particularly how this budget impacts Ward Five. But I do want to share just a few things about the budget and about Mayor Gray. Over the past several months, and it's not quite a year yet, Mr. Mayor, although you might not think that by the amount of gray hairs I've gained over the last 10 months. But over the past several months, I've worked with the mayor to outline some of the priorities in Ward Five that, over these 10 months, you have told me are important. There are a number of things that residents in Ward Five, particularly our ANC commissioners, who I want to recognize. There are a number of you in here tonight, but if you're an ANC commissioner in Ward Five, could you please stand for a moment and be recognized?[398.12][398.12](APPLAUSE). And if there are any civic leaders in Ward Five here tonight, if you could also stand and just be recognized briefly, please.[411.31][411.31](APPLAUSE). But I've worked with the ANC commissioners and civic leaders of residents about what those budget priorities are. We presented those budget priorities to the mayor, and we've worked with him to make sure that some of those things are included in this FY14 budget. All right. And the mayor's proposed $10-plus billion budget addresses many of the requests and funding initiatives throughout Ward Five. They include things like Ward Five schools and libraries, increasing the city's investment in affordable housing, promoting economic development, and enhancing job and educational opportunities. And I don't want to get too far ahead of him, and I don't want to get into the details of what there is in there for Ward Five, but I do want to say, you know, there are things like the substantial investment that he's made in affordable housing that I think is really commendable, and he deserves a round of applause for that.[466.81][466.81](APPLAUSE). Not only did he make investments in affordable housing, but he's invested in our schools. We've got full funding for the new Brooklyn Middle School. We've got funding that's going to be on the budget for Langdon as well. We've got a new McKinley that's being constructed right now. And so there are a lot of fabulous things that are occurring in Ward Five right now, and a lot more exciting things to come. You know, there's one person who I didn't get a chance to recognize who didn't fit into the ANC or Civic Association leadership. I want to recognize our school board representative who's here with us tonight, Mark Jones. Could you please stand and be recognized, Mark?[502.31][502.31](APPLAUSE). But I'm also pleased that the mayor sees value in making sure that some of the economic development priorities in Ward Five get some attention and get some funding. We've got some great streets, thanks to the work we've done with my colleagues on the council, as well as with the mayor, that we've got some great streets in Ward Five. We've got new retail priorities in Ward Five, and we're going to have some funding that's going to help to get some things going, finally, on those great streets. And so I'm so pleased and excited about that. I know there are a number of people throughout Ward Five, including residents who live and shop and drive along North Capitol Street and Rhode Island Avenue, but especially those folks who live along Bladensburg Road, which has been one of those corridors that have been neglected for a while now, and we're starting to see the types of investments that we sorely need and deserve. And so I really appreciate the mayor's efforts in that respect. I believe the mayor presented the council with a solid budget, one that is aimed at improving the quality of life of residents, incentivizing, really incentivizing economic development, increasing a lot of opportunities for our youth, our families, and our seniors. And I think that's important. Today, the council started its round of oversight hearings, which we're going to conduct of all the agencies in the District of Columbia, and I'll start mine tomorrow with a number of these agencies. And I look forward to working with my colleagues to refine the budget over the next 56 days to ensure that we're improving the quality of life for all Ward Five residents. But I'm going to end right there because I know you all didn't come to hear from me. What you did, you came to hear what is in this FY14 budget for Ward Five residents, and I want to give the mayor ample opportunity to present that budget to you all here tonight because I know you're going to have some questions. If there's anything that I know about Ward Five, and I know the mayor knows about Ward Five, is we have some really strong opinions about our war, and that's what I love about Ward Five. So give yourselves a round of applause.[613.54][613.54](APPLAUSE). So again, I look forward to working with my colleagues. I look forward to working with you all, and I look forward to working with our mayor, who I think, not only in words, but in deeds, has shown, over the time that he's been in office, that he cares about Ward Five residents. So again, without further ado, I'll bring our mayor back up. So thank you so much.[633.54][633.54](APPLAUSE).
I know that our council member has, as council members often do, lots of engagements tonight, so he's going to be heading out, and if he'd like to come back later, we'd love to have him. You know, we've done town hall meetings since I came into office, and this is no different. And joining us on those journeys has been our chief financial officer, a man who I have thoroughly enjoyed working with, and I cite it that way because he has announced his retirement.[670.82][670.82](LAUGHTER). Yeah, so he has announced his retirement, and I think he has done an absolutely sterling job. 16 years with the CFO's office, I think 13 of those years he has been the chief financial officer. A man who has the District of Columbia in his heart, and a man who, even though he is quote-unquote "independent," really is somebody that I've been thrilled to be able to work with as council chair, and now for the last two-plus years as the mayor of our great city. Please join me in welcoming and thanking Dr. Natwar Gandhi.[708.82][708.82](APPLAUSE). I think he's working that sympathy vote tonight, too.[719.43][719.43](LAUGHTER).
Mr. Mayor, you told me that if I retire, I would start disintegrating. The process has started. The process has started. I just came back from the doctor. I have a major knee problem. But I did want to come today. I wanted to come today to assure the mayor, Mr. McDuffie, and Ward residents here that mayor's budget is an enlightened and fiscally prudent budget. What do I mean by that? I mean by that that it is structurally balanced, meaning we are not going to spend anything more than what we take in, that we are not going to use our saving account, and that we're going to maintain our debt ratio, which is critical in terms of maintaining our bond ratings. Indeed, in February, under mayor's leadership, we went to Wall Street, and lo and behold, as soon as we came back, Mr. Mayor, they have upgraded us. This is remarkable because left and right, the rating agencies are downgrading many, many municipalities. They upgraded us. So I want to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor.[805.12][805.12](APPLAUSE). Now, my duty is very happy one, happy in that I'm here to certify the budget that it is balanced, not only the year, but also the plan, five-year budget plan. And that is remarkable. Second important thing that we want to keep in mind here is how do you allocate the money that we have? And this is truly remarkable, that Mayor, with his background in human services in this city, decades-long experience in managing, administering difficult agencies, he has come up with a budget which is, as I pointed out, not only fiscally prudent, but socially very responsible. Of course, having money helps, and we had estimated $190 million in 2013, additional dollars for the remaining six, seven months, and about $178 million next year, 2014. We are able to do that because, under mayor's leadership, city is on an economic roll. We are adding 1,200 new people to the city every month, and the latest count, Mr. Mayor, about these cranes that are out there was 50-plus. Show me a city that has that level of vitality, economic vitality, and I would say it's Washington, D.C. So all in all, I'm very pleased to be here, Mr. Mayor. I certify this budget as balanced, both in terms of 2014 and the five-year plan, and that it is structurally balanced, and that we are not borrowing more than what we could afford to pay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.[932.12][932.12](APPLAUSE).
All right, we're going to let Dr. Gandhi go because he's obviously in some pain here. So thank you, Dr. Gandhi, for being here with us tonight. Again, I want to thank you all for coming out. We're going to go through our slides, and you can make notes if you wish, or whatever the case may be, and we'll try to come back to those issues, you know, at the point that we get to the questions. What you see there is a picture of the district's financial wherewithal. Dr. Gandhi mentioned that we got upgraded by Standard and Poor's, and by the way, Standard and Poor's was the one that downgraded the United States government. So to be get upgraded by them, talk about the good housekeeping seal. I mean, that's about as good as it gets, you all. Anyway, you can see from about 2011, we started going up, and we have gone up tremendously. We were at a very perilous point with our fund balance in the city. As you can see, all the way on the left-hand side, all the way on the left-hand side is when the city was at junk bond status. We were $500 million in debt. And then in the early 2000s, it started to go up, up to about 2005, 2006, and then it started to go down after that. And I made a commitment, as some of you will recall, that we were going to rebuild our fund balance, and we now are up to the second-highest point in the history of the city. We have $1.5 billion in the bank, which has given us a great reputation on Wall Street. We've turned around a perilous situation, and we've maintained our 12% debt cap, which we imposed upon ourselves because the charter says we can borrow up to 17%, but we've maintained it at 12%, which has given us a good reputation as well. This budget has no new taxes, no new fees. No new taxes, no new fees.[1073.33][1073.33](APPLAUSE). In fact, as you will see, we will have reduced taxes in a couple of areas, and I'm sure some people will be happy that we've reduced some of the automated traffic enforcement fees as well while raising the speed limit in some of the areas of the city. But there is one way where you don't have to worry about it, and that is if you stay within the speed limit, you won't get a ticket. So we don't have to worry about what the fee is. Sequestration, of course, is an issue for everybody in the nation at this stage, but when we got our new $190 million revenue estimate, it actually was reduced by $50 million because that's what we potentially could lose in terms of dollars coming into the city during sequestration. So had we not been in this period of sequestration, our revenue estimate would have been $240 billion. But again, we're expecting to lose that amount of money because of sequestration. We've eliminated our tax on out-of-state municipal bonds, and we also have repealed the possessory interest tax, which is kind of a double tax through housing purchase, through the land acquisition for housing development opportunities, the Lotto program. We have been able to make additional investments without tax increases because of the following, and we are projecting, I think, right Eric, $389 million additional for next year's budget, which is incredible, given the national climate financially. And there's three reasons for that. First of all, income taxes are up. That's because of lower unemployment. We brought that down through the One City, One Hire program in part. Growing population, which Dr. Gandhi alluded to, about 1,100 and 1,200 additional people a month, and then job growth. And that is the One City, One Hire program, as well as other jobs. We have, right Victor, 32,000 new private sector jobs since January of 2011. We've lost 4,000 public sector jobs, which is what we expected, but we have 28,000 new jobs in the District of Columbia. And one of the things we're going to be working on is trying to increase the percentage of jobs filled by people who actually live in the District of Columbia. Anybody know what the percentage of jobs filled by people who live in the city is?
Thirty.
Who said 30? That is exactly right. It's 30%. Only three out of 10 jobs filled by people who live in the city. And a lot of people will say, well, that's because of the federal government, but actually, the federal government, I think, counts for 25% of the people in the city who are working. So 75% of the people, you know, don't work in the federal government, and it means I guess 75% of those jobs are not federal government jobs. But yet, we still have only 30% of the people who actually live in the city occupying jobs. We've talked about growing and diversifying our economy, which is one of the three principal foci of this budget. We've got additional business tax revenue, $79.7 million because our businesses are growing, and they're also increasing, and another almost $70 million for next fiscal year. And then, sales tax. We have been working hard to grow sales tax, and there's a great example right here in Ward Five, and that is, for many, many years, we had nothing. We had no retail at all in Fort Lincoln, and now we have a Costco in Fort Lincoln. And I happen to be among those who's happy that we have a Costco.[1307.33][1307.33](APPLAUSE). I do strange things like, you know, one of our six visions, right Victor, is to end retail leakage, and that is, everybody know what retail leakage is? Yeah, but you don't count. You're an insider.[1323.83][1323.83](LAUGHTER). Retail leakage, for those who don't know, is mean people who live in the city and go shop somewhere else. Yeah, they go shop in Maryland, or Virginia, or Pennsylvania, or Delaware, or wherever. So we said we're going to start trying to stem that, and Costco is one example of that because this is the first Costco we've ever had in the city. So I've ridden through the parking lot a few times, and the reason why I rode through the parking lot is because I wanted to see where the tags were from. Yeah, that's right. And it's interesting, about half the tags were from D.C. folk, and the other half were from Maryland and Virginia. So we're not only stopping a lot of our people from going outside the city to shop, but we're bringing in some of those elsewhere. So we're creating retail leakage somewhere else at this stage and collecting that money. And that's why the sales taxes are going up, because of the growing businesses and keeping our people at home. Next slide shows you how the budget is deployed. Almost half the money goes to human support services, which should not be surprising, given the needs that we've been trying to address. I asked the staff if they would map out for me the percentages over the last 10 years for how, you know, the percentages each year. What percentage was devoted to human support, public education, public safety, and justice? And it was absolutely amazing. There is about a 1% swing over 10 years in each area. Human support has been about 40% for the last 10 years. Public education, about 20%, and so on and so forth. Even though the dollars have gone from $6 billion to about $10 billion gross over that period, and the budget this year is $10.1 billion. And then you see, coming down, what's been in the other areas like public works, economic development, and of course, financing, which is well below here, anyway, our debt cap. The next slide shows you our effort to be as transparent and engaging as we possibly can. Those are just some of the organizations that we have met with before the budget was put together, and now we are going across the city, meeting with as many people as will come and meet with us, so folks will know what's in this budget. I'm sure we can add more organizations to that now. Now, the budget is framed around the One City Action Plan, and there are three priorities in that: growing and diversifying the district's economy, educating the workforce for a new economy, and improving the quality of life for all. So let me start with improving the quality of life for all. Councilmember McDuffie mentioned this, and that is that one of the biggest investments we are making in this budget is $100 million in affordable housing, which is desperately needed in this city. $86.9 or $87 million will go into the Housing Production Trust Fund, and because we're taking some of that money from the new money that came in this fiscal year, 67 million of it will go in fiscal year 13, assuming the council passes the supplemental, and then another $20 million in fiscal year 14. We also made a commitment to, once again, restore the efforts, and Michael, I'm sure you're happy about this, that we will be putting 20% of the deed recordation and transfer taxes into the Housing Production Trust Fund every year now henceforth. We had to stop doing that. When we came in, we inherited a difficult situation, and we took money that would have gone to the Housing Production Trust Fund and invested it into the local rent supplement program, the reason being that people might have been evicted. And what sense does that make to have people, while we're building housing, we're evicting people because of the failures of the inability of funding from another program? So we've gotten to a point now financially where we can do both. We can do the Housing Production Trust Fund and also do the local rent supplement program. There's another $13 million that will make up the $100 million. The next slide tells you where that money is going. $3 million into the local rent supplement program to be joined by $2 million that already was there. Everybody know what the HPA program, Housing? Who knows what the HPA program is? Okay. It is a program that helps first-time home buyers, and we're putting $1 million into that. $1 million into rapid rehousing to get people who are homeless restabilized. $1 million of emergency rental assistance dollars, which is designed to people who are at the threshold of becoming homeless, to be able to give them money, to be able to pay their rent, or other things that will keep them where they are, which financially will be a lot better, and certainly emotionally will as well. We are losing this year a number of dollars. Is it $4 million, Eric, we're losing in victim services money from the federal government, which is domestic abuse money, basically? And so we're adding $3 million here, and we got $4 million more that we're putting in, in another part of the budget. And then surprisingly enough, there was no automated approach to maintaining information about the 15 different agencies that are involved in affordable housing, so this will put a technology system in place as well. The next area is public safety. We are going to staff up. It'll be the first time in years that we've had 4,000 police officers on the force in the District of Columbia. We are getting close. We are at, Chief Lanier told me the other day, it was 3927, I think it is. Is that right? How many?
3907.
3907. Oh, I thought you said it was 3927. I was getting excited, chief. 3907. So we'll add, in the next fiscal budget, a net increase of 73 that will get us up to 4,000. We also are investing and replacing equipment for both the fire and emergency medical services and MPD. $8.2 million each year over the next three years will... Have you all seen the new Cruises on the street? Who hasn't seen the new Cruises? You have not seen them? And where you been?[1725.33][1725.33](LAUGHTER). I'm just kidding. We actually have a lot of new Cruises, and we're going to be purchasing more. What kind of cars are those, chief?
Fords.
Fords. Domestic-made cars, right? And of course, they will be fuel-efficient. And we're buying new equipment, too. New ambulances, new pumbers, and what else, Chief Ellaby? Where's Chief Ellaby?
He's not here.
Oh, he's not here? Okay. I thought he was up there. Okay. In any event, we'll be buying at least, we'll be buying more ambulance, I think it's 144 new vehicles that we're buying for FMES, and half of those will be ambulances, and the rest will be pumbers and other types of...
Batter trucks.
Batter trucks? Okay. But in any event, in three years, we will be one of the best-equipped police departments and fire departments in the nation. We are going to invest $700,000 in the police cadet program, which will allow us to bring, for each of the cadet programs, an additional 10 cadets on. And I mentioned the $4 million that we're replacing. And I mentioned the $4 million that we're replacing for the victim services program. We also, anybody know what a reimbursable detail is? Somebody know what that is? A reimbursable detail are police officers who are off-duty, and they go into, you know, the nightlife places. Yeah, nightclub, that's a good, yes, bars, okay? And help to keep order, you know, should they become disorderly while people are in there enjoying themselves at night. And that has obvious value to us as a city. We are losing about, I don't know, $35 or $40 million in federal funds this coming year. And we've managed to replace virtually all of it. The big chunk of it is the $28 million you see on the screen now in TANF reform. We are working to reform our welfare programs in the District of Columbia. I don't know how to put it anyway, other than that. The nation did that back in 1996. And the district chose, and I think it was a benevolent reason, I think it was an effort to try to be humane to folks, chose not to do that. Said, "We're not going to cut people off." But in the end of it, I think what we did was, we just kept people dependent. So, we're working hard to get people assessments, get people training, and we're keeping them on until that work is done. But then, there comes a point when you say, okay, we are there. You gotta kind of be on your own at this stage. So, the Department of Human Services, under the leadership of David Burns and Deputy Mayor Otero, have done an excellent job in creating a new program. And by the way, they put together the TANF program with the Homeless Families Program, because virtually every homeless family is also eligible for TANF. So we're now putting the case managers together to work together on those issues. This will allow us to improve case management, add job training where it doesn't exist, get people assessments, and hopefully move people on to an independent life. We're going to invest, over the next couple of years, a million and a half dollars in homeless youth, which is an increasing problem. And $6 billion will allow us to keep people continuing to receive TANF benefits who otherwise would be timed out. Everybody remember, who remembers how many years you have on TANF before you were timed out? Anybody know?
Five years.
Five years, that's right. Unless you're in the district when you have 17 years. And it's actually more than that, isn't it? Yeah. In any event, that is changing, and we are funding this budget in a way to keep people on until they have a reasonable chance to get their assessments and to be trained. We also are creating, and those of you who are involved with nonprofits, this should be music to your ears. We are creating what's called the One City Fund. And that will provide grants to nonprofits in areas such as education, job training, health, services for seniors, arts, public safety, and the environment. Virtually everything. I mean, if a nonprofit can't find itself in one of these categories, I don't know what they do. So, and, there will be $15 million, grants will be up to $100,000, which means we'll probably be able to award up to 130 or 35 grants in the first year of this program. It will not be administered by the mayor, it will not be administered by the council, it will be administered outside of the government. The dollars will go to the Community Foundation, which has a long track record, successful track record of administering programs like this. The applications will go to them, they will have panels that will review the applications, they will make their decisions, and they will award the grants. So, all the government is doing is creating the program and providing the funding for it, so that there's no dispute about, you know, politics getting into it, and why did Mark get a grant, and Tim didn't, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, we won't be involved in any of that. Excuse me, guys, for picking on y'all, I just happened to be looking your way. We are entering into an MOU with the Community Foundation to be able to do that. Now, let's get into some specific areas in terms of improving. We are expanding the hours of our libraries in the District of Columbia. Every library will be open every day. Monday through Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We're adding $8 million for that. And please, work with us to try to make sure those funds stay where they are, ladies and gentlemen, stay in that budget. We're adding $2 million to be able to purchase books, and other ways of people edifying themselves. And in addition to that, we are looking to modernize, rehabilitate, renovate, whatever you want to call it, the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Library, which is our central library in downtown. We're putting $103 million into being able to do that, and we believe, at the end of the day, will be a great addition to our city. What will happen is, there will be probably five or six floors added to the library, and will be floors for office, for housing, and it will help to pay for the renovation of the library. Because if we had to do this by ourselves, it probably would cost us about $200 million. But the funds that will be generated by those additional floors will help to pay for that. Woodridge Library, we're going to complete. We're adding four... That will actually be a total of a $16.5 million investment in the Woodridge Library. And I know there've been a lot of meetings with the community, and I know you all are happy that this is going to be completed. The Lamont Riggs Library is on the list. And 15, $7.2 million, and then another $11.5 million, so almost $19 million will be invested in Lamont Riggs. We've been working with the developer up there, at the, you know, the shopping center across the street. There may be space to locate it there if we can, we'll be able to start a little bit sooner than we thought. Otherwise, it'll be, huh?
K-City.
Yeah, 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 right. I don't know why I said that, yeah. It may be an opportunity to do it there, or where it is now. And by the way, that little graphic there is what the library would look like. That's just a graphic, once the renovation has begun. See the additional floors that are added on at the top? We also are going to continue, I know this, Don, this will be important to you, taking care of our seniors. We're investing and expanding our food services. We are very serious about it being an age-friendly city. I was just talking to Dr. Thompson earlier, that... I had a meeting today with one of our AARP chapters, one of our very dynamic chapters, I call it the ABC Anacostia Bellevue and Congressites. And what we were able to talk about were a number of initiatives that will make us an age-friendly city. And one of those will be aging in place programs, the villages that we are starting to create in the city. What do we have, 10 to 15 of them now, all across the city, that are trying to keep people where they are? We started a new initiative, that's what the Transitional Care Unit is, going into nursing homes, right? And trying to find people who could live outside of a nursing home, which is a very expensive endeavor, both emotionally and financially. Nursing homes have a place, but they shouldn't have a place for people who can live outside of a nursing home. So, Dr. Thompson has a staff that will be going in there, looking for people, and then finding alternative placements for them outside of the nursing home. And I already talked about the municipal bond, so I won't go back to that. For those of you who may be interested, we are working to save the United Medical Center. Everybody know what the United Medical Center is?
Greater Southeast.
Greater Southeast. I heard somebody say, "Oh, Greater Southeast." Absolutely right. It is now the United Medical Center. We are investing almost $13 million with a turnaround firm over the next two years to try to stabilize the business operations. But we also have in this budget $20 million to begin the process of building a new hospital. That hospital is antiquated over there. It was a hospital that was built with 450 beds. Nobody would ever build a hospital again like that, or try to operate a hospital like that again. Because, you know, when you went into the hospital, you went in 1950 when it was built, you go in for certain conditions that you wouldn't even go in the hospital for anymore, be outpatient. Or if you went in for five, six, or seven days, now, it's one day, and you come out. And one of the reasons you come out is because the insurance companies ain't paying for it, y'all. They're not going to do it. So, we want to build a more contemporary 21st-century hospital, and that process will be started with this budget. We also are going to invest in the arts. $250,000 for a strategic plan. We're raising from $2.7 to $5 million, the investment in our capital budget in the arts that will create, over six years, $30 million of public art investment and additional grants. And we also, you know, one of the hidden resources, and I want to, and John McGaw, who is our capital budget guru, you know, reminded me that we should put this out there for people to see, and that is, a lot of people don't even know we have an archives, that we have our DC archives. I don't mean the National Archives, the DC Archives, because it's off the beaten path. A lot of people don't even know where the street is. Nellor Court, right? Nellor Court. Yeah, it is off the beaten path. So, we're going to try to upgrade our archives. We have artifacts in that archives that date back to 1790. 1790. Was anybody in the city at the time?
Bob King.
Is Bob King in here? Where is he? Where's Bob King? You must have seen him leave the room and felt we were safe saying that, right? He gonna take you out next time he sees you. Anyway, we're going to put $4 million next fiscal year into beginning to create a new state-of-the-art archives. And we're looking at several places. One place we're looking at is the old recorder of the Dees Building, which is down on Indiana Avenue. And we've made no decision, so let me say that before I start, okay? Another place we're looking at is the Penn Center, which is right here in Ward 5. Wouldn't that be a nice archives? But no decisions have been made, y'all, so don't go out and say, "I said we're moving to the Penn Center," all right? And over a period of six years, we're going to invest $44 million in creating a new archives. We are going to expand parks and recreation options. Noma, which is right here in Ward 5, right? Right? Okay. $50 million in parks to create green space in Noma. We're going to build a new Fort Dupont Ice Arena, which will have two ice pads, building a new Berry Farm Recreation Center, which is long overdue, long overdue. $26.4 million, we've already broken ground on that. New athletic field improvements, and we're building a new Southeast Tennis and Learning Center, which is over in Ward 8 also, because the kids use it extensively. Streetcars are coming, you all. Streetcars are coming back. How about that? Streetcars are coming back, back to the District of Columbia. And we're investing, over the next six years, $400 million and $6.2 million to operate the streetcar, in addition to whatever cash they collect. The first line will be open this year. It will run from around Union Station on 8th Street, all the way out to Spingarn High School, which is out to Oklahoma Avenue. And then, we'll add the Anacostia Line, and we'll add a line that goes from Minnesota Avenue all the way over to Georgetown, which will be from one side of the city to the other. We're adding more bike lanes and bike trails, bike-friendly streetscapes, and more bike stations. We have the most robust bike-share program in the nation at this stage, although New York and Chicago are doing it now, and they're going to overtake us because they've got more people than we do. But whether they overtake us or not, we still were the first ones to start it here in the District of Columbia. And we're fully funding our commitment to Wamata, both in the capital budget and operating budget. And public works, exciting news. We are fully funding a supercan replacement program. Nobody will have to pay anything.
Amen.
Yeah. And we're doing it over a period of five years. The first two years, I think we're going to replace all the supercans, and then the next three years, we're going to work to replace the recycling bins. They're going to be made bigger. They're not big enough. So, over a period of five years, the entire cycle, everybody will get a new supercan if they need one, or a new recycling bin, because they will need one. And then, we'll start the process all over again in year six. Also, and I want to make sure I get this right, but, you know these trashcans that we have on the streets? Have you noticed there's no lid on them? Okay, well, we got creepy crawlies that go into them. So, DPW is going to make them rat-proof. We got some crafty rats in this city also, too, man. And then, Ward 5 again, Ward 5, we think, thanks to our city administrators' work, that we have... Where's the city administrator? There he is, over there. He led a task force, as he does, to solve these difficult problems, that has solved the century-old problem of flooding in Bloomingdale. And Mr. Branham, I know you live in Bloomingdale. And that solution will be in place by about this time next year, won't it, Alan? And we just went down to DC Water yesterday, man, they got this thing that they're, I don't even know how to describe it. They're digging these tunnels across the city that will increase the stormwater management capacity. This piece of equipment that they have, believe it or not, is longer than a football field that will dig these 23, what are they, 23 feet in diameter tunnels across the city? And they're starting that process. We kicked it off yesterday, so they'll be actually starting it in about three weeks, officially. Now, we also, how many people in here work for the DC government? Lot of folk, right? Andre, as you well know, we're going to give raises to all of our DC government employees. It is the first pay raise some of our employees have had in seven years, and it's time for them to be rewarded. With the new prosperity we have in the city, we need to reward our employees, the union employees and non-union employees as well. And we are covering all of our pension liability benefits as well. So, the second priority is educating and preparing our workforce. We are investing almost $80 million in our public schools, our public charter schools, as well as our DC public schools. Now, one of the things you will hear this year is that some of the schools have had reductions.
Or...
I guess, I guess he didn't like that one, huh? I got it, I got it, brother. I got it. And that's because, the last couple of years, the enrollment projections were not met by the schools. Everybody know about the Uniform Per Student Funding Formula? You get so many dollars based on the students that you serve. Well, in fiscal year 11, we had projections, and those projections were not met, and we sustained them last, you know, I mean, 12. And then, 13, we had projections that have not been met. And so, a lot of these schools are overfunded, based on the funding formula. And so, we simply adjusted the funding formula market, I know you know all about this, based on the number of students that are enrolled in the schools. So, the schools, some of them are going to have to make adjustments, and hopefully, it will be a motivation to, to really work harder to be able to elicit the involvement of more students in some of our public schools in the city. Enrollment is actually going up overall. We've had a substantial increase in charter schools. Charter schools now have 34,000 to 35,000 students, about 43% of our enrollment, and DCPS has the other 57%. But the DCPS enrollment is going up also, not quite as much as the charter schools are going up, but their enrollment is going up as well. And one of the reasons, frankly, and I'm proud of this, is because of our early childhood education program. We have the most robust early childhood education program in America. We serve all three and four-year-olds now, and we're now working to increase it to infants and toddlers. And it's getting these kids started at an early point. And frankly, by the time they get to kindergarten, some of these kids will already have had two or three years of school. And I think it is the right thing to do, and I'm going to keep doing it. I promised, I promised when I came into office, that we were going to do something about sending these kids, these kids with disabilities, to all these schools and all these different places and whatnot. The year before I came into office, Ray Gordon, we spent $168 million on paying tuition for children to go to non-public schools, because our system wasn't providing those services. And I said, you know, "It's just not right." And it's not just a financial issue. Every child should have a chance to go to a public school. We ought to be able to have the services for children who want to go, and their families want them to go to public school. And so, we have reduced that budget only because we have been moving kids. We incentivized our charter schools, our public schools, to be able to increase their capacity to serve children with disabilities. So, we're not spending $168 million now. The budget has come down, and come down rapidly, so that in fiscal year 14, the budget will be $80 million for non-public tuition, which means we will have brought it down by $88 million, and reinvested it. means we will have brought it down by $88 million, and reinvested that money back into our schools to build the capacity of our schools to serve children with disabilities. It is the right thing to do, you all. We are investing in schools. You heard the council member talk about some of the Ward 5 schools, the citywide plan. Dunbar High School, which is in Ward 5, will be completed in time for the opening of school for this next school year. Have y'all seen the new Dunbar High School?
Yeah.
I want to be there when the wrecking ball hits that dump that was built down there. It was, doesn't it look like a prison?
Yes, it was a prison.
Yeah, it really looked like a prison, especially given what they tore down. The school that they tore down looked like Cardozo High School, which is a beautiful, a beautiful, architecturally beautiful school. And we are renovating. We'll be finished with Cardozo in, in just a few months. It will be open for the next school year. I know surely that's music to your ears, right? It will be open for the next school year, so Dunbar and Cardozo will be finished and will be open for the next school year. And for those who... Those who have heard that Spingarn High School is closed, Spingarn High School is not closing, it is just temporarily closing to be modernized. Spingarn is going to reopen. We are investing $26 million in Spingarn High School. It will come back as a career technical and technical education school that will offer training in transportation and healthcare occupations, so that those kids who don't want to go to college can go, go to work out of school. How many, how many of y'all have been around here long enough to remember the vocational schools that we had in the city? Wasn't that a mistake? Wasn't that a mistake? Yeah. Armstrong, Chamberlain, Bell, Burdick. That's right, the Penn Center. And what's the one we missing? Phelps. Phelps, that's right. Phelps is reopened, it's an architectural, construction and engineering school. We need more of those kind of schools in the District of Columbia, and we're bringing them back. Also investing in, also investing in our middle schools. There'll be a new Brookland Middle School, in which we're investing almost $38 million, and the renovation of Brown, in which we're investing $32 million over a three, four-year period. We also are investing in elementary schools, right here in Ward 5, Langdon. Langdon will get $600,000 this summer, and then another $13.6 million in fiscal year 14. Burrows is getting about $13.2 million. Langley, Langley, I went to Langley. Yeah, I went to Langley, yeah. About three years ago. Never could understand, this is, this is a question I never could get an answer to. I went to Langley, and when time came to go to high school, they said, "You're going to Dunbar." I said, "Well, I want to go to Tech." I said, "It's two feet between Langley and, and, and Tech." They said, "I'm sorry, but you're not in Tech Zone."
That's why we have to feed you the boundaries and the feeder patterns, sir.
Thank you, thank you. And I know you weren't there, I know you weren't the superintendent of schools back in that day. Never could get an answer to that one, Chancellor. So, maybe you can help me get that one before, you know, before too long. And Brookland, we've already talked about. We also are doing something else, and that is, we are investing more money in trying to intervene with very young children who have, who have apparent disabilities. What I'm gonna say sounds odd, but I'll explain it. And that is, we are increasing our coverage from 50% to 25%. And you go like, "Wait a minute, 50 to 25 is a reduction, isn't it?" It really is not, all right? The reason why is, we only cover for intervention now children who have a severity of disability at 50% or greater. The kids who are 25% to 50% are not covered. So, we're gonna raise the threshold from 50 to 25, so we now will be covering 75% of those children, rather than just 50% of those kids. And you know what that, that will pay off. In human terms, it will, some of these kids, it will mitigate the problems that they have, and it will serve, it will save dollars also, in terms of our, our children with disabilities being served in our schools. We also have a very challenging truancy problem, right Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yep. And we, it's challenging all of us, and we're putting a million dollars in that, which is just the beginning. We want to put more into that, as they work through the programs of what we're going to do. And then with UDC, y'all are aware we have a new interim president at UDC, and we hope, we hope he does well. We're gonna do everything we can to try to support his efforts. We're putting in 2.7% of 1.7 million, and then they have, given them the authority to write Eric to spend another $10 million that they have at this point. Now, the last area is growing and diversifying our economy. And that's what, that's what Deputy Mayor Hoskins has been charged with doing. And I think he is doing a fantastic job with the team that he is working with. We have cranes everywhere in the District of Columbia, not just in the downtown area, but we got cranes now out on the east end of the city. We got cranes down in the southwest area of the city. We got cranes in Ward 5, we got cranes in Ward 4, cranes in Ward 3, cranes in Ward 2. We got cranes everywhere, right? 57 cranes actually working to build stuff in the District of Columbia. We're gonna get Skyland done. Skyland is the longest uncompleted project in the history of the world. We now have settled all the legal cases that are associated with Skyland. We've started to tear down some of the buildings. A brand-new town center will be built. You can see, see some of the, the renderings up there on, on the, on the right-hand side of the slide. For those of you who know where Skyland is, you probably can't believe that Skyland will one day look like that. It will be anchored by Walmart, and there will be other retail operations in there, which will probably include a restaurant or two as well. The Yards, which is down in the ballpark area, that's rapidly developing. We're gonna relocate some DC water facilities for $18 million, which will more than pay for itself because of the tax dollars that will be generated by the commercial establishments that will go in down there. Investing $13 million in Popular Point to begin that process, and that is just the beginning. And continuing with St. Elizabeth's, as well as Macmillan. St. Elizabeth's, we are, we've already, we're already investing $113 million. The Coast Guard will be opening up this year with 3,750 employees, 3,700 employees. And we are starting to build food capacity on the east side. Is that right, Vic? The Food Pavilion will be finished this year, won't it? So, that will be, that will be starting the use, alternative use of St. Elizabeth's. And Macmillan, I think we have between $40 and $50 million in the budget for Macmillan. It will be, create some green space, it will create a medical center. We just had a, a nice seminar that Diphead put on at Trinity University to talk about how we move forward with that. Streetcars, I mentioned, we're putting $400 million. We're building a new Frederick Douglass South Capitol Street Bridge. Everybody know where that is?
Yes.
It's on its last leg, literally. It really is. It's gonna cost us $622 million, but it will be a, should be a nice bridge for 700, $622 million, right? You know, this is unbelievable, but we are being required by regulation, by law, to put a drawbridge mechanism in. Everybody know what a drawbridge is, right? You know, you know how much that's at? It's open, it's open, as I understand it, three times in the last 10 years, all right? The current bridge. Anybody know how much it's gonna cost us? About $622 to do that?
$140 million.
So, we, if we're able to get out of that, we'll have $140 million that we can put somewhere else, presumably, so we can keep building. We are going to do more with, additionally, with our great streets, sidewalks and bridges, et cetera. Now, some of you have seen our sustainability plan, and the staff went through and figured out that we have 200 capital projects that, that address our sustainable DC plan. Then transportation, water, food, built environment, health and wellness. And then we're gonna do the second year of the Sustainable DC Budget Challenge for $5 million. And in the last two slides, you know, as much as we've been able to do in this budget, there are some things that we have not been able to do. And so, we set up what we call a priority list on things that we would like to do if we get more money, and we think that there's a good chance we'll get more money. We get another revenue estimate in June, another one in September, and then one in December. Is that right, Eric? So, if we get more money, and the council agrees to this, I'm sure they will have their priorities too, which makes sense, these are some of the things that we would like to do, and they're in priority order. Serving infants and toddlers, and increasing the subsidy rates for those programs, adding about $6 million to the Office on Aging to increase some of the rates there, investing in adult literacy. Do y'all know we have, we're creating a new Department of Behavioral Health? Anybody know that? It will combine, it will combine the Department of Mental Health and APRA. So, because a lot of our, a lot of our people, it's about 30 to 50% of our population that use both services. They have both problems. So, the idea is to take APRA out of health and put it into the new department, Department of Behavioral Health, and they will work much more closely together than they have in the past. You know, we did that with DGS. We took about, it must have been six or seven different units that we put together. MPD had a construction unit, DPR did, the fire department did, and we had OPM, and we got every initial imaginable. OPM and two or three other departments. And we put them all together in the Department of General Services, and it really has worked quite well. Brian Hanlon has done a great job of managing that department, getting it stood up. Have to give our city administrator, the city administrator is, he, he, he is the builder. He is the guy. You know, he was responsible for building the convention center in the city and the ballpark, and so many of our school, school modernization efforts were started under his leadership. And one thing I say about Alan, man, if you give him, if you give him a job, just, you know, just come back, you know, and it'll be done, just like Bloomingdale. I mean, nobody could solve that problem for 100 years, and he put together a group to solve it. So, he did a great job with that. Alan, thank you very much for what you do for our city every day. And so, that, that is the 14 budget. Not every detail, of course, but I think enough to give you a picture of what we're trying to do. It's a $10.1 billion budget, and we've been able, the first two years, we wanted to stabilize the situation. And now we are putting together the third budget for us. We've gotten to a point where we have more money, and we're investing that money back in the people of the District of Columbia, and certainly you can see the people of Ward 5 will benefit tremendously from the investments we're making. So, I will be happy to take any questions that you all may have. Yes, sir, right there in the green shirt.
I'm on your ICH, I'm on your ICH committee.
I'm on the committee.
Your NA, Council on Homelessness.
Yeah.
And each year during the winter plan, we spend untold amount of money for families and some individuals in motels and hotels. And every year, I've been, you know, asking why don't we take some of the government buildings that we have, and we have government employees either from DSA or GSA that could rehab these buildings and make, you know, available housing for individuals, families, and save, you know, money out of the budget from DHS. Each year, I've been saying this, and we've been constantly giving the proprietors of these motels and hotels millions of dollars to house these families and individuals every winter. And even though the district government doesn't want to get into the landlord-type position, but I'm sure it's something that we could do to alleviate spending millions of dollars, you know, from DHS budget. And to piggyback on the second question is, what about the individual resource center that we have for, you know, we have a family resource center, which is great, and it's up and working, but we've been delaying and avoiding the issue of the individual resource centers. And we have many homeless individuals that need that resource center that could help, you know, get them to the right door to become productive members of, of our population.
Well, let me, let me try to tackle your last question first. I think, I think the resource centers work a lot better for families than they do with individuals, because a lot of, you, you know the individuals on the street. These are people who really don't even want to come into the shelters at times. And we have a lot of private providers, you know, who provide those services to the individuals. So, they are expected to do that through their contracts with the District of Columbia. So, I mean, we'd be happy to explore it further with you, but I, I actually think, based even on my own experience of working with homeless youth for 10 years, that working with them through the provider of the services is probably a lot more efficient. They'd have case managers there, they would have staff working with them in terms of the overnight stays, would be a lot more effective than trying to bring everybody together in one place, like at the Virginia Williams Center. The issue with housing families, I mean, we, we grapple with that every, you know, every, every year, actually. And you'd be surprised at how much it would cost to be able to build out buildings, you know, to, to be able to accommodate effectively. We, we built out DC General in part last year, right? And that cost us a lot of money to be able to add the, add the space there. So, I think we ultimately would be better off trying to get folks out of there. That's what the goal is. And we have brought together now the tenant case managers and the homeless families' case managers at the Virginia Williams Center. And the goal is really to try to get these people to another place. The city's spending a lot of money on homeless families, as you know. It isn't, it isn't just, the cost of housing a family for a year is $50,000. That doesn't count the tenant, that doesn't count Medicaid, that doesn't count the food stamps, that doesn't count WIC. You probably would be up to about $75,000 to $80,000 when you add all of those additional benefits into that. So, our, our focus right now is to try to get people out of there and into housing. That's one of the reasons why we're putting $100 million into affordable housing, to be able to create opportunities for people to, you know, get out of there and hopefully stay out of there.
I agree with you on that. What is, what is affordable housing in DC?
Well, that's one of the reasons why we're putting the money in. Affordable housing becomes affordable by virtue of, of the government's investment. There, there's a lot of housing that is increasingly expensive in the city. But if the government invests $100 million, in essence, in essence, one of the things we're doing is buying down the cost to the person who lives there. So, it reduces the cost, that's what makes it more affordable. And those units will continue to be controlled by the District of Columbia, right, Michael? And so, that's, that's what makes it affordable. It isn't so much that affordable housing exists now, we're gonna try to make it exist. That's what the investment is for.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, this is Karen Sento, Nancy Commissioner for Ward.
Hi, good evening, girl.
Good to see you. Thank you very much. I actually wanted to speak about certain things that are on the revised revenue priority list. And it appears 1 through 9 tend to deal with helping the human services side or helping out community. And I know here in Ward 5, and certainly in my community, I have a very large population of residents who unfortunately are not really the benefactors of the sustain, the economic vitality that's occurring in the city. Rather, they're on the opposite end of that spectrum. They are un, they're unskilled, they're unemployable, and they are in fact tenant recipients. And when we talk about affordable housing, I'm sure you can correct me if I'm wrong, affordable versus low income, I think, is pulling on the average median in the District of Columbia, which I think may be $70,000, but I'm just not really sure. So, I guess my question is, from a budgetary standpoint, can you speak to specifically areas like Ward 5, like Ward 7, and like Ward 8, which have a very, very strong underserved population? What exactly in the future will happen to them from a budgetary standpoint with all of the profit and economic vitality that's occurring in the city? What's also happening with those other residents, who are certainly residents in my population? And they speak to me all the time about how they see the cranes, how they see the vitality, but they aren't benefiting from it.
Let me go back to your issue around the area median income. The area median income, and, and the area includes a lot of those counties outside of the District of Columbia. We have five of the richest 10 counties in the nation, in our area. The area median income is $102,000. If it were only the District of Columbia, it would be half of that. It would be probably $50,000 to $55,000. So, the idea is to try to, first of all, invest a lot of that housing money in serving people who are at the 0% to 30% of the AMI, and that is, they're making nothing, or up to about $30,000, their household making up to about $30,000, which will start to address some of the folks that you are talking about. Now, the folks in the tenant population, one of the things that they are now being required to do is to get an assessment and to go into training, in order to be able, if you hit the 60 months, you will get a chance to get your assessment done, and then get into a training program. But once your time is up, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do something else, because all we're doing is just sustaining dependency. Now, one of the things that we focused on... Now, one of the things that we focused on with the One City One Hire Program, are you familiar with that, Carolyn?
I am.
Okay. We have actually gotten placed now almost 5,700 people through that program. And we have, while we focused on the entire city, we really have focused a lot on Wards Five, Seven, and Eight, because the unemployment levels were so high there. The overall city unemployment level has gone from 11.2 down to 8.6, but the, the unemployment level in Ward Five has come down by about three percentage points from 15 to about 12, which is still huge. Ward Seven has come from 17 down to about 14 and the 13s. And Ward Eight, anybody know what Ward Eight's unemployment level was when we started?
30.
30 percent. 30 percent. And it's come down now, come down to, come down to a little bit over 20. So, we are focusing a lot of energy on those areas, because you're absolutely right. Those are areas where people really have been, you know, they, they, they are, they are, if you go back and look at the profile, oftentimes, they are people who did not even complete their high school education, and their skill sets are really not marketable in a lot of places. So, we're having to work with some incredible deficits there to get people up. One of the things that DOES has done, Lisa Mallory in here?
Down here.
Okay. Okay, oh, Liz, okay. One of the things that DOES has done is really to try to expand, upgrade, working with the Workforce Investment Council, some of the training programs that we offer. I don't know, Liz, if you want to come down and speak to some of those programs, but they are focused specifically on the very people that you are talking about. And I'm not going to misrepresent, trying to get people to a different place who have those kinds of deficits is really a challenge. And a lot of times, it's not just the skill set deficit, it's frankly people who won't show up every day, it's people who won't come on time, and then people, as, as the kids say, have an attitude when they get there. So, and you know what? If a person, if a person would show up every day, show up on time and have a positive attitude, there are a lot of employers that will go a long ways with you. But again, getting people to a different place is a very difficult challenge. It's not one that we're not trying to meet, or that is not, is not insurmountable, but at the same time, I don't want to misrepresent how challenging it is to be able to solve that either. Yes?
I'm concerned about the fact that the upper two-thirds of Ward Five, as this person comes to, comes to educational facilities. I've been living in this area for 50-some years, and my kids still had to go to Roosevelt High School. They weren't admitted to McKinley. All the development that you have in your program are for schools that are on the periphery of Ward Five. The central part of Ward Five is mainly single-family dwellings, and the population is not as dense, and so we've been overlooked. The one secondary school we had in the center has been given to charter schools, and you've ignored the fact that we have boroughs school right there toward the center of this area, which would be a much better place for a middle school than trying to put it in with a shoe horn at Brooklyn site now. And I understand it's still on the books, and the child that I had that went to Roosevelt is now 60 years old, but Roosevelt is still the school identified for people who live in my area. And there is something wrong with that picture. We are taxpayers and homeowners, and, and we are being underserved when it comes to educational facilities. Adding on to that, you're moving kids around, like from Marshall to Langley.
Langley.
And you're going to provide transportation. I didn't see anything in your transportation part for schools. We don't have neighborhood schools anymore. You keep telling us we don't have enough kids to have neighborhood schools, but we're not supporting the kind of school we need. We need to have an educational campus where kids can look to go to school from pre-K through the secondary program in a general community and not be all over the place. And if it's going to be.
Let me talk, you got about five questions in there already, okay?
You gotta get it all in at one time.
We actually do have an educational campus, and Langley, Langley and McKinley is an educational campus.
I understand.
Okay, let me, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. Langley start as pre-K through eight, and McKinley is nine through 12. And Chancellor, aren't we putting a middle school into McKinley next year? Yeah, so, and McKinley was, McKinley was one of the first schools that was modernized. So.
My best shot in the center of Ward Five is on the periphery. There's a whole good amount of Ward Five schools in here.
Well, which, which, which area are you talking about?
I'm talking about the other. The upper two-thirds of Ward Five, when you start down here at Rhode Island Avenue and go north, you don't have, you, Taff is gone. It was there. Bacchus is gone.
Well, Taff is not a secondary school, though.
Yes, it was.
No, it was a junior high school.
That's secondary.
No, not, no, it isn't. Not, not, secondary to us is nine through 12.
Taff was a secondary site, and it was considered a secondary school because junior high schools were secondary schools. Now, that's, that's the definition of secondary.
Well, I, I respectfully disagree with you, and I respectfully disagree, because I was one of those who went to school. When we went to secondary.
Oh, that's all right. I was prepared to secondary education, and junior high school is one of the places where I taught.
Okay, well.
I mean, there's a difference in how you look at it now. Middle schools, you might not want to consider secondary schools, but Taff was a, was a secondary school because it had the labs and all of the things it needed for.
Okay, what area are you specifically talking?
I'm talking about.
Because we have Spingarn, we have Spingarn, which is going.
That's, that's way over on the other edge of Ward Five.
Well, give, give me the geography so I can get, answer, try to answer your question.
The, the area enclosed by South Dakota Avenue, coming back down, all of Michigan Park, North Michigan Park, right. Michigan Park, North Michigan Park, and a good bit of Brooklyn. You do not have a, a, a educational campus that serves that community.
Well, Bacchus, but Bacchus is now being used as a community college, too.
Those schools are real, the history park area.
Yeah.
Or Fort Totten, Bacchus area.
Yeah, but you, you also have, you know, I'm gonna step beyond the Ward situation for a second. The area y'all are talking about is not that far from Coolidge either. Coolidge High School is at Fifth and Tuckerman.
Yes.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to respond to this gentleman up here. He was talking about the area where Bacchus is. Bacchus is at South Dakota, near Riggs, South Dakota and Riggs. That's, that's the area he was talking about, so. Hmm? That is near Coolidge. It's about, it's about 10 minutes from Coolidge. I, I don't, I don't want to debate, I don't want to debate DC geography with folks, but I grew up, I grew up in the city. I was born and raised here. I know the city like the back of my hand, and Coolidge is, Coolidge is not that far from Bacchus.
Sure is.
Well, yeah. Jaren, so you want to add anything to this? Come on down, come on down.
We've been looking very closely at the population demographics around supporting high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools all across the city. As many of you know, the school age population in DC across the city has declined over the last 20, 20 to 30 years. But in fact, as Dr. Gandhi pointed out, with the influx of new residents and the baby boom that's happening, by 2020, we will actually begin to see a significant increase in the number of, yeah, the baby boom, uh-huh. We'll see a significant increase in the number of school age children, public school age children. And so, we are careful about planning. Right now, if we opened a high school in this part of the city, we wouldn't be able to fill it up. In fact, we have much more high school capacity now than we have. But part of the reason why we're trying to be thoughtful about, and good stewards about holding on to our buildings is, we don't want to give a whole bunch of buildings away, and then when we have a lot of kids, we don't have the ability to go back and use them for schools. So, we're working very closely with the Office of Planning to make sure that we're keeping our inventory in ways, even if we do short-term leases or medium-term leases with charter schools, we're trying to make sure that we have inventory so that when there is enough capacity to fill up a school, we can reopen.
You mentioned boroughs. Boroughs was on the list that I, that I presented earlier.
Yeah. Let me just, I want to follow with this, because I had two of my residents this week. They are second graders, their children are in the second grade. Eighth graders have been jumping on them at the, on the buses, and this is going to be a problem. We have pre-K through eighth grade, and we got eighth grade children that we know have a lot of problems in our community, and we have them in there with our babies. Now, something is wrong if we continue to think it's right to put an eighth grader, 15-year-old with the six and seven-year-old with the bathrooms and the closets and the places where they are. So, we need to look at this very closely. The mother is very upset, she's contacted you and everyone else, and no one's been paying attention to her children getting beat up two or three times a week on the buses that take them from up, off of, off of Taylor Street and back over to Brooklyn School. So, I just want us to be clear about that.
Let me say two things. You should tell her to email me directly.
She has.
I'm kaya.henderson.
She has, I have it in my.
You can send it to me. I check all my own email, and I have not gotten an email about eighth graders beating up on second graders. kaya.henderson@dc.gov. But in fact, this is the very reason why we are building two brand-new middle schools in Brookland, because the community came to us, and I'm proud to say, I, I live in Ward Five. The Ward Five Education Council came to me when I first became chancellor and said, "The pre-K to eight model is not working for us, let me tell you why." And we sat down and we engaged in lots of conversations. Mark Jones was a part of the conversation, Raisa Pata, and a bunch of other parents and, and community members here in Ward Five. As a result of their advocacy, your colleagues, we're opening two brand-new middle schools in Brookland. We're opening, I mean, in Ward Five, we're opening McKinley Tech Middle School this August, which is a neighborhood school. Ward Five children will be able to go to McKinley Tech. The middle school is not an application school, the middle school is a neighborhood school. And then, as you know, if you've read any listserv in the neighborhood, there's been robust conversation about the building of the Brookland Arts and, Arts and Languages Middle School on the site of the old Brookland Elementary School. The reason why, there's no other ward in the city that's getting two brand-new middle schools, and this is directly in response to the issue around the pre-K to eights not working. And so, as we open up these middle schools, we will eliminate the pre-K to eight situation so that our young people can go to middle schools that have the labs, that have the foreign languages, and all of the other things that will make them competitive for our best high schools. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Eushana Evans. I live in the Riggs Park neighborhood in Ward Five, and my question is, when will the city make connecting the Fort Totten area and Riggs Park a priority in the budget, specifically through three ways? In a grade-level connection on the Metropolitan Branch Trail, bike share stations, and possibly a north-south line on the streetcar? Thank you.
Well, I don't know, I don't know specifically the answer to any of those three, but I will say this, that every, every area you just mentioned is a priority for us in the city. The, the bike trails, the bike stations, and the streetcars are all priorities. Now, the streetcar, I'm gonna be honest with you, is down the road. We, we don't have our even first streetcar running yet. How many years it will take to get the full 37-mile system in, I really don't know. That will continue to unfold, and DDOT will be out in the community on a regular basis connecting with folks to let them know how this thing is moving along. But the bike stations and the bike trails, we're putting those in all over the city. So, I don't know what to say other than that. I'm sorry. No, it's a good point. I agree with you, and we are, we're investing as much as we can as we go along. We had 54, 54 new bike stations that we're putting in this year, and then we added 10 for the next budget. So, there'll be 64 new bike stations between now and the, the next year. And I agree with you, it's interesting, a lot of people don't like bicycles. They, for whatever reason, want to stay with automobiles, and it is not sustainable in the city. We, at the, at the current pace, by 2032, we will add, have added 250,000 more people to the population of the city. Automobiles are just not sustainable. So, I agree with, I, I appreciate you bringing up the issue of bicycles, because that and streetcars and walking, you know, are, happen to be much more, much more sustainable methods of transportation. Do you have a bike? No. I, I, I don't, I don't. But, 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 but if I were in a different job, I would. I've had a bike before. I had a bike before I got in this job. I like bike riding. Okay. No, but I don't ride one right now. Can you picture me riding down the street in a bicycle at this point? Okay. There you go. Let me see. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go from one section to the other. We got three sections, I'll pick, we just had one in this section, let's go to this section. Okay, sir, you defer, so we'll go back, back to you.
My question is this, according to the budget, from what I see, 40% of my tax salary goes to the social services, which I don't have a problem with that right now. And you said basically that the, these numbers have been pretty much the same for the last 10 years, it hasn't gone up much, hasn't gone down much.
Percentage, percentage-wise, yes. So, my issue is this, should the economy turn around and things get better, and as you've mentioned, you're trying to wean folks off of the assistance, are there any hard goals and numbers, such that five years from now, we're going to expect a 20% decrease or that sort of thing? Or, you know, what are, what are we doing in terms of a timeline and goals? Well, it, it's really difficult to state it in those terms, because there's so many, there's so many complexities associated with what's in that, that 40%. Let me give you an example. One of the big numbers in there, in there is Child and Family Services. That's, that's the foster care program. And I won't say that, that, that it didn't have predictability in it, but it was hard to predict, because it depends on what's happening in families. But we've actually increased our capacity, and I'm using this, this specifically as an example, because it's a good news story. We have gone from having 3,300 children in foster care to now being down to around, under, 1,400, which is a huge drop. The budget in Child and Family Services has gone from $335 million to, I think, around $250 or $260. So, we're starting to save money there for the right reasons, but no, we don't, we don't have, we don't have hard goals in that, because some of this stuff is so unpredictable. But again, you go into the tenant program, which we've talked about tonight, there is a hard goal there that says, "I'm sorry, but once we have your assessment, once you have training, and you have reached 60 months," that's it. Mm-hmm. Let's go to this section, Kathy.
All right. First of all, I want to say, I want to thank you for putting together a really solid budget. We've, we've come through some really hard times, and this is a solid budget that I think every citizen in this city can appreciate.
Thank you.
And we're not going to go into the speci, I'm not going to go into the specifics of, you know, fighting for this or that at this point, but I think with this budget, you have an unprecedented opportunity that your predecessors didn't have. You have an opportunity now to really go back to every community, but I'm advocating first for Ward Five here, particularly 5D, and listen to the citizens so that you can really hear what we hear from us, so that you can really achieve your goal of improving the quality of life for all. And I think that opportunity is before you, and I encourage you to seize it with both hands. We have seniors, you know, I'm the chair of 5D. We have a quorum here tonight. I asked my colleagues to come to familiarize themselves with your budget, so they can go back to their constituents. The time is right to really lift all boats, and we are ready, we are ready to work with you and our council member to make sure that the quality of life for every person living in our community and, and beyond is well-represented and that has, and that we all have a good quality of life. So, we thank you for the heavy lifting. Now is time for the fine brushstrokes.
Okay. By the way, that is, that is, and we need to, we'll continue to do this, but that is exactly what we did with the One City Summit. We were at the convention center, as you remember, because I think you were there, last February. The information that came from that was then translated into the One City Action Plan. And when you look at this budget, the three priorities in the One City Action Plan actually are the frame for how we're spending the dollars in this year's budget. So, I think this may be the first time that we've been able to say, this is how we're connecting the dollars with the priorities that came from what the citizens said at that time. I'll give you a specific example. You know what the, remember what the top priority was that came out of the One City Summit?
Affordable housing.
Exactly. Who said that?
Yeah.
That's exactly right. Affordable housing, and that's what we've done. We've invested $100 million in affordable housing. So, this is an effort to say, this is what people thought. We had 2,500 people who participated in the One City Summit. There were 2,000 there and 500 online. And we took that information and with, with fidelity, put it together, put it out to people, and then said, "Well, this is how we're gonna, this is how we're gonna treat our investments as we go forward." But, I think we want to have a One City Summit, again, next February, and then look at, first of all, report on what we've done. And by the way, you can go on the website and find out. What is the, what is the website address for people to get the One City?
OneCityActionPlan.DC.
Yeah. OneCityActionPlan.DC. Okay. OneCityActionPlan.DC.gov. And there are, there are measures that are associated with each one of the priorities, and it will show you where we are or whether we had to delay action or something like that. So, there's an accountability mechanism that's tied into it, too. Then, next, next time we come around with this, there would be a report on what we've actually accomplished, and then continue to try to, to do exactly what you talked about, and that is continue to upgrade. Let's see, let's go back over to this side.
Hi, Mayor Gray. Kelly Ellsworth from Bite Back. One of the last times I saw you was here at our graduation, where you gave certificates out to all of our students. When I looked at your budget when it first came out, I saw goal number two, and I was so excited about it. Educate and prepare the workforce for the new economy. I don't see a lot in here about job training. I would love to see more. I don't see a lot in here about adult education. And I would say, more specifically, I don't see a lot in here about bringing the community into the 21st century. I'm really excited about DC being the digital capital of the United States. I'm really excited about broadband for everybody. But, Bite Back and a lot of other training providers were able to provide a lot of computer training, computer literacy training, thanks to federal stimulus dollars, which are now gone. Is there any funds available to continue to, for us and other organizations to bring our citizens into the 21st century?
Well, a couple of things I'll mention. The One City, the One City Fund that we're establishing will include opportunities like that. And, you know, an organization like Bite Back, being a 501(c)(3), right, would, would be eligible, CEO, thanks for coming, would be eligible to apply for one of those grants. And there'll be a lot of grants that will be given out, assuming that the, the, the program is approved as it is. Now, let me just tell you, as somebody who's spent most of my life working in the nonprofit sector, people gotta get out and advocate for this stuff. You, you can't, you can't just sit there and wait and say, "What happened to the money y'all were gonna put in the One City Fund? Nobody let us know." We, we're letting folks know right now. Come down on April 15th at 10:30, and we'll give you all the more details about it. On April 18th, there is a hearing being conducted by the council. We need folks to show up and say, "This is important to us." Just what you just said. This is what we could do with a grant, if we were able to access this. This is why this money is important to us. But, I don't want to be in a situation where I come out to another town hall meeting and have to stand up here and somebody, you know, saying, "Well, we didn't get X, or we didn't get Y." And I go like, "Yeah, three people showed up at the meeting that we had down there, and two people testified." That's the way you make things happen in this city. And I say that's from the perspective of somebody who is an advocate for people with mental retardation and an advocate for children who are homeless. You gotta be heard, you gotta be specific about what it is you are seeking, and then make sure you get up and support that. So, I would say, one, try to, try to come down on the 15th and then come back on the 18th to testify as to why this would be important to you. And then, secondly, you talk about digital literacy and technology. We are working hard on that. Are you familiar with the work that we've done in that area? With, for example, the startup 1776 that we, we--
Yes, I am. I saw a presentation by the founder.
Okay. Well, by the founder?
The young man who was one of the founders of 1776.
Okay. Yeah. Well, they, they are on Seventh, on 15th Street, and our Deputy Mayor's office has been working closely with them. We have attracted some of the technology firms into the city. In essence, what we're trying to do is create more job opportunities for people in technology by bringing those firms into the city, which would be a perfect place for the people that you are working with and training to be able to have, you know, the capacity to be able to go to work thereafter, because there are more jobs being created, created in that area. Frank?
Mr. Mayor, Frank Malone, I represent the 100 Fathers. We do mentoring, fatherhood training, all over the nation and all over the city. We've been working with Ms. Todman, Housing. We were there yesterday. We've worked with Ms. Henderson in the schools, trying to do blackmail achievement. What your budget, first of all, I want to compliment you on your budget. This city is in the best financial condition that it's been in a very long time, and I'll compliment you on that. What I'm here advocating for is for the Fatherhood Commission on Fatherhood Men and Boys, and here's why. When there was a rape in a school not too long ago, they called the 100 Fathers to go in to work with the young men. We've been in Woodson, we've been in a lot of schools, doing a lot of things, a lot of mentoring, but we're looking for a prevention budget, a, a, a budget that allows for prevention money for the DC Fatherhood Coalition to be able to work with the young men and boys, to try to get them in some kind of shape, knowing where our school system is. When fathers and men go into the schools, the academics go out. And so, we're trying to look for a budget that would allow the 35 organizations that we represent to be able to access funding to work with the young people in this city outside of what you already have.
Well, again, that's one of the reasons why we're creating the One City Fund. And that is to be able to, you know, if, if everything will, would depend on us being able to pinpoint every specific category, we'll never get there. It just is impossible. Oftentimes, nonprofits know the needs because of just what you do every day. I mean, you've been an extraordinary advocate in that area. There's no reason why after One City Fund is created, that you can't develop a grant application and say, you know, in the area of education, or, you know, one of the other areas that I mentioned, "This is what we think needs to be done, and I'm submitting a grant application to be able to get funding to be able to do this, and you can get up to $100,000." That's the idea, to create flexibility in being able to meet needs that may have not been fully identified or fully appreciated within the government. To come and say, "Look, this is what I've observed at the community level or at the school level, and I'm making a case then for the investment of funds." I don't know how to say it more strongly, that this can happen if people will get out and support it. If I'm the only one down there, you know, advocating for this, that money will probably go in three or four different directions. It'll be deployed in three or four different, which would be a shame, because I'll come back to the next meeting, and then I'll hear the same litany of concerns that are expressed when we could, we could do something about this right now. So, Frank, I ask you to come down on April 15th at 10:30 in G9, and then come down on April 18th at 11:00 a.m. in an unspecified, where is it? Room 412. And they have to sign up, right? They call the chairman's office and sign up?
724-8032.
724-8032. 724-8032. It's got a nice little ring to it, doesn't it? I know that number, because that used to be my number. All right. Let's go to this section. Okay?
Okay. My question is, I would like to have a definitive definition of what affordable housing is. It's, I'm a real estate broker, and it's my, and when I talk to people about affordable housing, it's a confusion between low-income housing and affordable housing. To me, affordable housing for DC would be the, based on the income, not per capita income and not medium income, but the income that the majority of the people who live in the District of Columbia earn, and use that income as the basis for determining what affordable housing is. What I think that in many cases, or most cases, the definition financially of affordable housing is higher than what the major, what the majority of people who live in Washington, in Washington, DC earn. And so, the housing is not--
But, it actually, it actually is not. It actually is not. But, let me, let me, let me go back to where I was earlier. AMI, that is, Area Median Income, which I think is, includes areas outside the district, and we can't change that, because it's--
3,000.
Well, no, it's not. It's $102,000 a year. 100% of the area median income is $102,000. And then, it's a question of what percentage you want to establish of that. That's why I said, when we look at what we're trying to do with a lot of the $100 million we're investing, it will be for the 0% to 30% level, which means that if it's $102,000 and it's 30%, that is a household earning about $30,000. So, what, what you will get is an establishment of the percentages that will be covered. Some, some, some projects you will find will go up to 80%, which is still a pretty high. That's $80,000. Some are like 60%, some are 50%, some are 30%, some are 15%, whatever the case may be. That's, so you got almost like a sliding scale. And it means that the housing that's established there, you cannot earn over that particular percentage. So, if it's 0% to 30%, that is going to be reserved then for a lot of people who are making a lot less money than others are making. It's almost, you know, you, 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 to go back to the term you were using, low-income housing, you could probably include, whatever that definition is, you could include it probably in the 0% to 30%, because anybody that's making nothing up to $30,000 for the whole household, that's, that's low.
The largest group is the children. Their income, that's what I think, income of the darned children.
But, a lot of them are not gonna be included in that, because they're gonna be above, they're gonna be above, the whole household's gonna be above the affordable level.
What would be considered that now?
I, I can find out. Anybody know what the average income is for a household in DC? Pretty high. Probably $90,000 to $100,000 easily for the whole household. It's not one person, it's the whole household. Okay. I'm gonna, we're gonna take three more questions. We've got one, this section, this section, this section, and then we'll quit, okay? Anybody over here? Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming again, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. I live here in, in Woodridge, right over by Brooklyn, just a few blocks away. And I think, for a lot of us who live in the area, maybe echoing the, the sentiment of the, of the lady who, who said that we feel maybe underserved, it's, you know, it's a very solid, middle-class neighborhood, as you know, and so on. But, what we don't feel we have is a commitment by the city to invest, to really make it an excellent area to live in, in terms of streetscape and retail sectors and all of this. And so, for instance, in Woodridge, where we live, we have a depressed business area, which could be fabulous, could be an excellent area for, that would have, you know, cafe. It's so easy to imagine it, but it needs leadership from the city, and I don't think it can happen without that. And we haven't seen any, and the budget doesn't seem to include any, any emphasis or any, any way to get to that. So, this is something that I think we feel, a lot of us who are in the area, there's a group called Faria, the Friends of Rhode Island Avenue, a couple, and several people here are from that group, who have been trying to advocate for that, and I think feeling like we're not getting the love from the city in, in that respect. So, just like to draw your attention to that and ask for--
Let me ask our Deputy Mayor to speak to that, because I know that there are, there's Rhode Island Avenue investments that are being made, especially in streetscape, there's great, great streets, investments that are being made. But, Victor, let me ask you to specifically speak to this gentleman's comment.
Yeah. I'll, I'll start with, first of all, we have been working very much with the private-sector retailers, actually bringing them to sites throughout Ward Five. And as a matter of fact, some of them have landed at, at the, near the Rhode Island, the Rhode Island Station, the new development over there, Chipotle and some others.
Rhode Island Row.
Yeah, Rhode Island Row, yeah. Chipotle and a few others have landed over there. But, we are starting the Great Streets Program, where we'll be working directly with entrepreneurs to do what we've done on H Street. I don't know if you've seen H Street lately, but it's gone through a transformation. We're trying to spread that throughout the city, and we're, we specifically targeted Rhode Island Avenue for part of that. But, if there's some particular areas that you want us to look at, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and--
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time and for giving us, I think, an excellent budget.
Thank you.
My question is, I'm wondering how are you planning to strategically marry the private investment in building and development and construction that I see with the needs of unemployment? Because you mentioned the fact that people in DC need jobs. Are there programs in place that require private developers and others to hire DC residents, and how well are they working?
Well, one of the things we're doing, there's a lot of things, a lot of ways in which we are actually working on that, and first, first of all, it's a great question. But, if you look at our, our LSDBE program, we're really trying to revamp that. We've got legislation that's now, we had some legislation earlier, and I won't go into all the details of that, but we're getting ready to resubmit again, what, in about a month, Janine?
At the end of April. So, we're close. For the lead of April 20th.
That's, that's precise. April 27th?
Yes, sir. As you said.
Okay. April 20. And by the way, she lives in Ward Five also. She's our, she's our Director of the Office of Policy and Legislative Affairs, which is the, the arm that works with all the council members. In any event, that's one area where we are trying to do more, to make sure that the businesses and the people who live in the District of Columbia get those opportunities. That's why, the point I made earlier about only 30% of the jobs in the District of Columbia are filled by people who live in the city, you know, and there's more than one reason for that, of course. But, the fact of the matter is, we're gonna, we're becoming more vigorous advocates to get the people who live in the city into jobs. But, we gotta have people who are prepared for those jobs also. And we've got an awful lot of people who live in this city whose skill set is very limited, and that's the most euphemistic way I can put it. If you would like to, you know, the Deputy Mayor's sitting right behind you, if you'd like to connect with him in some fashion about the concerns that you raised, I know he'd be happy to talk to you further. Let's go to the middle here, middle and here, and then we're done. Anybody in the middle area, middle section? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Gray, since you mentioned the One City Action Plan and that the goal three is improve the quality of life for all, I just want, I was just curious to ask about your position on the Large Retailer Act and what you feel about businesses coming into DC and setting certain standards for living conditions, I mean, for the pay, living wage, and then also what you feel about hiring first for DC residents, especially if it's targeted, like this legislation, for large retailers that have, making over $1 billion and that are over 75,000-foot-square size.
Well, I haven't, I haven't actually read the bill in detail, I'm gonna be honest with you, because I've been working on the budget. And I know that there's been a hearing on it. I will get to reading the bill. Some of our staff have probably read it. But, you know, we're trying to figure out, you know, we're trying to figure out the right balance. We want people to make a, a great wage, but we also don't want to run everybody out of town, you know, who is developing or might develop a business in the District of Columbia. So, we'll look forward to working with, I know that the, I think it's Local 400 is, is one of the, I think, one of the proponents of the bill. So, we'll look forward to working with you all as we try to figure out where the right balance is. Are you, are you a member of Local 400? Okay. I was just curious, because you, you know, you are received very well-versed with the, with the bill. Somebody's gonna get the last question in this section here.
Like, it's me. Good evening. I, I'm the Langdon PTA President, and I wanted to thank you. I thought I would be here upset about us being delayed about modernization, but I want to thank you for placing us in the 2014 budget for modernization. We have a wonderful school, and I think getting a facility that matched the caliber of the teachers that we have will, will make it so that we can enroll so many more students in our school.